You know what I mean, that it's just a bit of medicine and then...
There's a lot of talk going on. So it's like trying to digest.
It's just life, you know, it's life. It is life, but it's in time.
You're going to keep talking?
Sure.
Here you go. Thank you.
Good evening. Regular council meeting, February 13th, 2023. Could we recite the Pledge of Religions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote, Dale Macklin?
Yeah.
Jerry Kurian?
Here.
Ray Karen?
Here.
Joseph Ravel?
Yeah.
Jeff West?
Here.
Lee Trayhan?
Here.
And Peter Rappel?
Here.
Approval of minutes from the previous meeting for January 9th, 2023.
So who's... Any discussion?
No.
Second? Now any discussion? The nun, could I get a roll call first?
Dale?
Yes.
Jerry Kurian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Ravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Your... Lee Trayhan, sorry.
Yes.
And Peter Rappel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. On to Communications, Employee Recognition.
Who can go first?
I'll go first because yours is much bigger than mine. Not to say it's less important, but I wanted to take a minute and... One of the things I've asked all the department heads to do month to month is try to, you know, catch our people in doing something good and recognize them for doing it. And this month, I wanted to bring up Mary Fortier, who is in our front office. She is our new sewer utility billing clerk. We've been trying to get numbers together for pulling together all the stuff we need to apply for the funding for the Chaffey Book Pump Station. And that required a lot of backtracking of flow numbers and things like that. And Mary dropped pretty much everything she was doing, got in the weeds by hand, and figured out what we had for the last four quarters going backwards. And I had told her, you know, take a couple days. She had it to me that afternoon. So I just wanted to recognize Mary for going above and beyond on that and thank her for her dedication to the job. And I know Scott has somebody to recognize.
Good evening. I'm here to recognize one of our members. I want to call up Captain Whalen Cap for... The Winslow Fire Department would like to recognize Fire Captain Whalen Cap with his certificate of appreciation. Since taking the position of the Fire Department Head, Captain Cap has taken on many projects that are vital to our department. Whalen has written proposals such as new fire hose, proposal for a new tanker pumper, as well as taking the lead in providing financial projects for the department as far as interfacility transfers. Whalen is a leader and mentor to others that work with him. The proposals were sent to the Public Safety Director and the TAO management. This proposal for the hose was approved using department capital. The hose was ordered and received in just a week's time. Whalen is part of the truck... Fire Truck Committee Chair, he is the chair. He has set up meetings with our Pierce rep. He has put a list of pros and cons with two different tanker pumpers. He took the project on and developed financials again for the interfacility transfers without hesitation. His commitment to the Winslow Fire Department, its mission inside to better the department, the staff, and the future of this department is greatly appreciated. There you are. So Whalen, on the behalf of the Winslow Fire Department, myself, I'd like to give you this appreciation. Should I stay right here?
Presentation from the interim Fire Chief's couple.
Yeah, okay. So last month, we talked a little bit about the Winslow Fire Department kind of expanding its service in a way to provide interfacility transfers for people who are needing more definitive care. If they're in a local hospital here and they're sick enough to go to a definitive care facility, we'd like to be part of that. I have a couple of people that I've asked to come. I am not an expert at this by any means, but I've offered to host our medical director, Dr. Tim Pei. He's going to come up and do his little presentation. And as far as the money goes, I'm going to ask firefighter Michael Greenberg to come up and talk about the numbers and ask any questions you may feel necessary, and we'll get the answers to you.
Dr. Pei?
Hello, thanks for the invite. My name is Tim Pei. I'm a physician here. I work primarily at Maine General as an emergency physician. That's my primary job. I'm also, as chief, recognize your medical director in the city of Winslow for Fire and Rescue Department. I have many hats that I wear in EMS. So my role here as your medical director is one of the jobs that I do. The voice, and I always have to balance who I'm speaking for and about because my other job is the regional medical director for all of Kennebec and Somerset Counties. So the state of Maine divides the entire state into six regions. Each of those regions has one medical director that is charged with all the different agencies within that section. So we are Region Three. And as the medical director for Region Three, I oversee Winslow Fire and Rescue, but also 33 other EMS agencies. So that includes Augusta, Waterville, Delta, Reddington, Fairview, Smithfield, Rome, Belgrade, it goes on and on. And I think it's best if I put that hat on when I talk tonight because I think the decisions that we're talking about are as much of regional impact as they are just this scope of this city. So EMS as a system is a very complicated operating design. And I think when you consider changing what you're doing as an individual EMS agency, it's important to back up and understand what your role is amongst the entire region and all the hospitals. So for us, we think of mainly the hospitals being Inland and Maine General and Thayer. That's the most immediate hospitals that we would interact with. Is that fair to say? Okay. In my region, I also have Augusta, Reddington, Fairview, Sebastopol Valley. Those are all the hospitals within my greater region, okay? So EMS in general, the way I think about this is not what does Winslow need or what does Augusta need or what does Delta need? I think about why I need as a patient when I call 911. Okay? So the whole system is designed to get the best possible care for each individual patient. Fair? So we want to think about any decisions like that. So I'm a veteran in medicine than I am at art, but I think simplifying this is easiest for me. So I think about the patient, forgive me. Okay? And when you call 911, you're activating a system that is a fragile and dynamic system. It's really a three-legged stool, okay? So that three-legged stool looks like that, sorry. And it's made up of three legs. If any of these legs fail, your care is not good. So the first of that is first response. Now, that doesn't mean anything different in Winslow now as 911 response, right? Because your Fire and Rescue Department does both. They are the first response and they are the 911 transporter. I live in Rome, so when I call 911 out of my house, it's 20 minutes for Delta to get there. Delta's the 911 transport. So I rely on Rome Rescue, which I'm a part of, and I respond with as a physician to do first response, okay? So we talk about that as first response, 911 transport. Now, we only need these two, which is Winslow Fire and Rescue, so long as your needs as a patient can be dealt with completely at the hospital that Winslow takes you to, which is Inland or Thayer. Okay, Maine General Thayer. That's definitive care. If your definitive needs can be defined, done, dealt with by me as your ER physician, then you don't need anything else. However, if you need inpatient care or a definitive care interventions that's not offered at Inland or Maine General, then we do not meet your needs with just these two. We need interfacility transport. Okay? Now, this becomes critically important if you have a time urgent mortality-linked event. What do I mean by that? So time urgent means you need an intervention quickly. And if you don't get it, mortality, your ability to be saved, is at risk. So that would be a motor vehicle crash where you hit your head and you have a bleed that's expanding in your brain, and you need a neurosurgeon. That's either Bangor sometimes or nowadays really Portland, okay? If you have a heart attack and you have a blood vessel blocked feeding blood to your heart, you need a stent to open it. That can only happen at Central Maine Medical Center in Lewiston, Northern Light in Bangor, or Maine Medical Center in Portland. Both of these are time urgent. The more we delay that, the less likely you have a good outcome from your heart attack or your motor vehicle crash, okay? So we need healthy first response. So in a heart attack that's bad enough, that's shocking your heart, bringing it back to a pulse, right? Then you need to see me in the ER after the paramedics and the EMTs and the first responders get that back. I need to then give you drugs to open that if I can. Sometimes it doesn't work, and now I need my partners in definitive care of the bigger hospitals. All that defines on every leg of the stool, right? You can get away with this without interfacility, but only if everything that you need is taken care of with the hospital that your 911 transport takes you to. And really, for us here, Inland is a small hospital, and my Maine General Thayer is a freestanding ED. So we're very dependent on getting to at a minimum the admission place, which would be Augusta or Northern Light up in Bangor or other hospitals wherever we can find if it's a busy one and there's not a lot of capacity. We really define, and that's dramatic for the head injury, dramatic for the heart attack. But sometimes that's just you getting ongoing antibiotics for your infection or that's surgery for your small bowel obstruction, or it goes on and on and on, right? So when you consider proposals about expanding the region's ability to provide interfacility transport, you want to consider that in this whole system. So we... Has anybody read the articles over the last two years on EMS in Maine? Where we're at a critical threat as far as our ability to provide the care that's needed? We do not have the ability, the capacity in our EMS system today throughout the entire state to meet the demand, which is your 911 calls and your needs. There is a demand-capacity mismatch.
Doctor, can I...
Please, jump in.
No, we only allow 10 minutes for presentations.
Oh my gosh, where am I at then?
Nine.
All right, let me summarize, thank you. I appreciate it. So we could use help, is the summary. I could use more EMS agencies that can provide interfacility transport, okay? I don't have enough as an ER doc trying to move my patients out. So anytime that I hear a proposal that, hey, we're willing to come in, all hands on deck, and add capacity to this, I'm all here. All ears, please, tell me more, right? I lean on you all to help with the fiscal responsibilities, your other duties. How is, that's all abroad. From a clinical standpoint, patient care absolutely needed, okay? So I'll leave it at that for 10 minutes. And I can take questions later on someone else's time. But thank you for the 10 minutes.
Thank you, sir. Scott, I believe you had somebody else that wanted to speak.
Yeah, if it's okay with the council, can I request another five minutes for somebody else to speak? I have one more person that would...
How about three minutes?
Three minutes? Okay, I'll take what you give me, three minutes.
Does anybody object to that?
No. Okay.
I'll be brief. My name is Michael Greenberg. I'm a firefighter. I'm assisting chief Bolick with the financial analysis of the interfacility transfer proposal. I believe this was passed out...
Yeah.
So what we did was we took a more in-depth look at the costs based on some of the concerns that were expressed last time, specifically the cost of maintenance of the vehicles. We added in maintenance costs at 5% of revenue. That was, I believe Chairman Drapp, you have a background in trucking, and I think you made a suggestion that maybe 2% to 4% of revenue is a typical number. So based off that, we went 5% of revenue for maintenance costs, factored that in. A dilution rate of 10%, that's an insurance industry term for the amount of money that Medicare is going to stick. Even when we do the work, there's a certain amount of money that's just not going to be paid out. Some T is not crossed, some I is not dotted, it's inevitable. Based on preliminary research, we can expect that number to be about 10%. So that's been factored in. I'm not going to walk you through line by line because I only have the three minutes. I don't want to take up too much time. But we're short with revenue, assuming six transfers per week, two ELS, two ALS, and two PS, which are three different categories, two of each. Six transfers a week, that's a very conservative number. The costs, the revenues would exceed the costs on an annual basis by about $20,000, $19,000, maybe $74,000. That's, we know what the crew cost is, we know what the fuel cost is, close, reasonable estimate. That's 5% of... Maintenance cost is 5% of revenue, the dilution rate is 10%, and that's with a set aside of $1,154 per week for a new apparatus. We're figuring new apparatus, new ambulance, $300,000. That's 60 grand a year divided by 52 weeks, that's $1,154 per week. So I factor that in as a cost. So with that all factored in, we're showing revenue in excess of cost of about $20,000 a year. Obviously, ambulance services don't run that surplus of profit on the whole. But this program can be financially viable, we believe. And hopefully, these numbers get you a little bit closer and then help to hone in a little bit on what some of the concerns were last time. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, through the chair, at this point in time, we can't ask questions of Dr. Pei at this point. If anybody had any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Yes. You said there's a need for, you know, transfers, interfacility transfers. Do you have any statistics that say, like, what is, you know, how many people are getting transferred or the delay of transfer? Or why do we need more transfer capacity in the system?
I don't have statistics prepared for you, but I can speak from my own experience. If that anecdote is okay.
Oh, that's fine. Yep.
And it's a great question. I can just speak to the intermittent delays in asking for interfacility transport. So when, if I were taking care of you and I determined it was safe to move you to the next hospital and I asked for that, when I began working at Maine General 15 years ago, if I didn't have an ambulance there within a half an hour of that request, then that was a problem. That was an outlier, that was... I intermittently will experience four, five-hour delays. Waiting, sometimes longer, sometimes till the next morning because there is not capacity, no ambulance available. And that's after calling seven, eight different EMS agencies, sometimes more. That can be an inconvenience most of the time for you. You're just waiting in my ER or you're waiting for the bed, the room of my ER, and you're in my waiting room. So that's inconvenient for you. You're experiencing a delay in getting into the ER or you're delaying getting your care. It becomes critical when you need a time urgent. But I can't give you stats, I'm sorry. I don't have those prepared.
Okay. But there are, you could get them if you had to?
It depends specifically what you were at. I don't want to promise what I can't deliver, and I don't, I wouldn't, I can ask for them, yes. But we would need to talk about what specifically you wanted for that.
A follow-up with...
Yeah.
With the council chair or...
Yes.
The safety director with specific questions.
Absolutely.
Okay, sounds great. I don't want to...
Yeah.
I'm all set.
Can I just ask, how you spell your last name?
It's P.I.E. H.
Thank you.
Thank you, doctor.
Other questions?
Okay. Boarding Committee's appointments. Tyler Mitchell, a reappointment to the Kennebec Sanitary Treatment District. He did tell me he'd like to be reappointed. I did not receive the application from him. So if you'd like me to get that application before approving that, we can do so.
We normally haven't in the past.
We normally have not?
No. If they say that we reappointed him, we just...
We don't want him to change his mind and not reappointed.
We also have Devla Boye and Roy Strahan, reappointment for the Personnel Appeals Board. I did receive those applications and they were on your desk. I also have Chad Bell and Judy Ann Bouchard, reappointment for Boards, the Park and Rep Board. They have all told me that they would like to be reappointed. And I have their applications in there, so... Oh, sorry, I guess the last ones here. And also reappointment for the Kennebec Valley Council of Governments, Jerry Kurian and Lee Trayhan as alternates. They are currently appointed, just reappointments.
Take motion, we accept all.
Second?
Do you guys on the council want to continue then? Lee?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Okay.
So roll call vote, Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Kurian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Ravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trayhan?
Yes.
And Peter Rappel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. And then reports of committees and commissions, come in and take a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, members of the public. January has been a busy month consumed by grant applications, budget preparation, and the Public Safety Department trial. So the first thing I'd like to report on is Public Safety Department. We started the trial on January 1st of 2023 with Police Chief Leonard McDavid being named interim director. It may appear to people that we haven't been doing a whole lot on this, but in fact, behind the scenes, we've been doing quite a bit. But the fact that it doesn't appear to people that we're doing a whole lot is actually a good thing because it means we're maintaining services the way that we always have. If it were really noticeable to people that we were doing something different, I would say that that meant that we were not meeting our charge of keeping services at the same level that they have been. The change should be transparent to the public as we go forward. We held our first public engagement meeting on January 10th. Many of our Fire Department personnel attended, and thank all of you who did. And we also had two members of the council and one member of the public attend that meeting. We presented the draft of the Public Safety Director's job description, and we took away some valuable feedback, which was incorporated into the job description, which you'll see before you tonight. We also took away some ideas for how to assess the success or failure of the trial. The primary metric is that we are seeing no decline in our response time or in our level of service. The secondary metric would be our budget. Are we showing that we can provide the same services at or below the cost that we were providing before? That one's going to be a little bit hard to actually assess on a six-month trial because the budget period's a year, and anything can happen throughout that year. So, but we definitely want to see where we're trending on budget. The third metric is staff engagement and morale. That one is a much harder thing to assess, but we have developed an employee engagement survey. At the time of this report, we hadn't delivered it yet, but we have passed those out to... At the time of this report, we hadn't delivered it yet, but we have passed those out to every member of the Public Safety Department at the meeting that we had scheduled for February 7th. And that was the first time that we had had everybody from both departments meet as a group in a mass staff meeting with myself present as well. Those surveys are to be returned to myself, not the interim Public Safety Director, so that I can go through them and share them with the council and will share them with the public as well. But those are to be, they're to come here first for us to evaluate what's going on. All staff have been encouraged to give open and honest feedback during this trial and one of the most important things I want everybody to be asking themselves is how has your job changed? Are you experiencing more work? Is your work any easier? Have things gotten any better or have they gotten any worse for you? How has your job changed since we started this trial? And I think that's really the most important question. It is important to note that no employee will lose rank or pay as a result of this change, but there may be a change in some duties and/or schedules. That's, that's kind of unavoidable, more so in the police department than in the fire department, just because we have the issue of not needing as much administrative overhead as needing boots on the ground. So that could result in changes. But again, originally, the thought was that we would eliminate the lieutenant's position and now we're not going to do that, but we do need to change the lieutenant from being purely an administrative position to doing more work out in the field and providing more support to our officers that are out there on patrol. So right now, that's kind of where we're at. You do have in front of you for vote this evening, the job descriptions for both the deputy fire chief and the deputy police chief. So we're moving forward with that. I have scheduled the next public meeting to be held. Actually, Katie, do you remember what day I told you to put that out there for?
On Wednesday, the 22nd at 6:00.
Okay. And that has been posted to the website and Facebook. So hopefully, any of you who have an interest or want to have feedback, input, please show up to that meeting. That's the time to ask questions, get out any concerns that are going on and, and any ideas you have for what's the way that we measure if this is working or not. So that's what's going on with the Public Safety Department. Other news, the contract for the municipal facility study has been signed and a kickoff meeting is going to be held February 15th, so Wednesday of this week. All of our department heads should plan on attending and all facility committee members have been invited. I am excited to get this project off the ground. It should give us some answers to what the best way forward with not only our fire department is, but the rest of our town facilities and hopefully get some answers as to which way we should look at going. In the meantime, we have the old council chambers in the process of being renovated. They're getting very near completion at this point. We're going to be able to have a small employee break room, a secure office for HR and Finance Director, Tanya, and we've got a pretty sizable conference room still left over. So we'll still have a nice meeting space for, in the range of 15 people to meet at the town office. So excited to get that done as well. In staff news, I would like to take the time to congratulate three of our career firefighters in January. They were promoted on January 16th and this is a big, big step forward for them. On January 16th, Lieutenant Adam Burgess and firefighter Jonathan Berenger were promoted to the rank of captain and firefighter Sean Stetson was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. That's a big deal for, for all of you. So congratulations on that. We also hired two new firefighters, Thomas Brown and William Crawford. Welcome to them. And we welcome back firefighter Ben Lubier. The fire department is now fully staffed with these positions. Am I correct? Awesome. Great job and good job to Chief Boldig for getting that done. January also sees us saying farewell to some of our other employees. Unfortunately, Officer William Crawford IV and Officer Jacob Coolen have indicated their intent to take positions with Somerset and Kennebec Counties respectively. They've done a great job during their short tenure in Winslow and we wish them all the best. Our code enforcement officer, Amos Micho, has also made a decision to pursue other career options outside the code enforcement arena. His last day will be February 14th, tomorrow. Vacancies for these positions, as well as the vacant town clerk position, have all been posted to various job boards and media outlets. So if you are listening to this and you think that your skillset might fit one of those jobs, please feel free to put in your application. Going forward for February, the top priorities are going to be finalizing the FY24 budget and finalizing several funding applications for Chaffee Brook and for Sunset Heights. Those are probably the two biggest projects that we're going to have over the next five to eight years. It's going to take a lot of money to get those accomplished and we're going to try to get every bit of funding we can that is not strictly loans or bonds. The MDOT award for Cushman and Robert Street also has to be completed. Even though we've been awarded the money, we have to get that put into the primary system. But despite all of this, we've, we've gotten the funding for the 2.7 million. We've gotten funding from DEP for 200,000, but we still have to jump through all the final hoops of getting them to actually give us the money. They've said you can have the money, but we, we don't actually have the money. So we still have to go through all of those systems. We have to get through the various state and federal hurdles. So that's going to be the big, the big push here in February. It's all about budget and getting our projects funded, so, and we'll keep moving forward on the Public Safety Department. That's all I have for everybody.
Susan, Chair?
Yes.
Erica, so after tomorrow, Amos's last day is tomorrow.
Yes.
Are we getting help from any other communities that might be, if we have permits that need to be for contractors?
So I haven't spoken to him yet, but the code officer from Manchester reached out to me over the weekend via email and said that he would like to, he's not interested in the permanent position, but he would like to offer his services for two days a week until we can get the position filled. So he is, he's skilled, he's already permit, I mean, already licensed, so he would be a good option for us. We always need to have plumbing inspection done. What we've done in the past with some of our building permits, if we don't have an inspector on site that day, we've had the contractor take photos and our code officer goes back and reviews them after the fact and then contacts the contractor if there's any issues. It's, it's not the perfect way to run it, but for the most part, we haven't run into any issues with that. So as a short-term solution, we'll be doing that again.
So, yeah.
The police department? Do we go through each one of them?
We normally ask for others that are interested. I know that Paul has something for us tonight, I believe. Scott, did you have additional?
No, I was just going to add the, the motions.
Well, you can certainly, you can certainly do that.
You got it first.
Paul's standing closest, but at the pleasure of the chair.
Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Counsel. Glad you wanted to give a quick shout-out. I wanted to put a shout-out to my crew from a couple weeks ago. We had to be stormed in two weeks. I wanted to commend them. They put in about 60 hours overtime in two weeks. So they did the work. They really had to do some long hours and I'm very proud of them. Nobody really had any mistakes or accidents. They couldn't help together, so, you know, for 60 hours overtime in two weeks on top of their other 80 hours, it's, it made some long weeks for these guys. So I wanted to give a quick shout-out to them. Second one I have is the fire department. Last week, I asked them if they could do a confined space to go do some exploratory camera work down on China Road where the big box cover is. The engineers were looking to get some dimensions in there and nobody wanted to go into this confined space. So Scott set it up as a training for his guys between the ropes and confined space, so.
Thank you very much and I just greatly appreciate it. The engineers, they wanted to tell me what's the, you know.
Well, like I say, it was, it was great. It really, it really helped us out. And just to give you a quick update, a couple of those projects, Cushman Row right now, maybe out of date in about two weeks. And I think Chaffee Brook, as far as the river crossings, the same thing. We're probably two or three weeks out, depending where we are for finding. I obviously don't want to put something out that, you know, we get caught, but we'd like to get them out on the street and get them contracted. Then this is going to happen, they'll probably may anyway, so. So we get them out, so we get contractors lined up, so. That's all I have for today. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Scott?
So I'll be brief. In January, the fire department held a promotional process for in-house candidates, four members to part in a panel interview and then a written assessment. Public Safety Director McDavid sat on the panel and he said it was an enlightening process. So I am pleased to announce that the fire department promoted the following, two captains and one lieutenant. Firefighter Jonathan Berenger was promoted to captain. Lieutenant Burgess was promoted to captain and firefighter Sean Stetson to lieutenant. And as well, we, we did hire two firefighters, Benjamin Lubier and Thomas Brown, so.
Thank you, Scott.
Congratulations.
Chief, Katie?
This'll be quick also, and I agree, that was a great hiring process. It was nice to be in, you know, hiring panel. Using one police officers, there were different breed of people and I'm running really quickly. Firefighters were really caring amongst people, so it was great to be on that type of board. I also want to commend the fire department on a couple of things. I got to see firsthand, they had a major training thing, their full-day training on January 28th, and I got to walk around some of the stations and I was very impressed how they all worked together. I had all these stations going at once and it was very efficient and very well-run. There was a lot of people there and it was very well-run, so I wanted to commend them. The other thing is, as you got, everybody knows, a couple of weeks ago, we had some really record-breaking weather. So I woke up the day before, I was kind of concerned about it and I contacted a counselor and I contacted Paul from Public Works and I contacted Scott from the fire department, Scott Boldig. And I really wanted to do something to keep this town, if someone needed some place to be worn. And I got to commend the fire department once again, under the leadership of Scott Boldig. They took the bull by the horns and within hours, we had a warming center up the school. The school really helped us out quite a bit by joining in and they hired a janitor, stayed there all night. Waddle had places during the daytime, but there was no place at nighttime, so they set up 15 beds within hours, so I just want to commend you about that. And last of all, I want to commend SRO Ellen Stewart. We haven't said too much about her the last two or three years, but the call volume up the school has quadrupled. She's getting like 60 calls a week and she's very, very busy, but she also spends a lot of time, and she'd really be commended because she spends a lot of time with the students, the staff and the parents, and she's really did a good job of building the triangle between those three dynamics and she's getting everybody working together and I just want to make sure we recognize this. So thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you, Chief.
The finance committee reports, those are all in your packet.
Yep.
Oh, and the budget as well.
At this time, we have public comment?
Oh, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go, Paul, please.
Do we have a motion?
No, motion to accept the reports.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that red?
Yep.
Hi, Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry, not here. Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Trahan?
Yes.
And Peter Graffo?
Yes.
So it passes 6 to 0. Jerry's not here. Now we have the public comment.
Okay, the public comment is, anybody can get up and comment or speak on anything that is not on the agenda and that's limited to three minutes per person.
I do have one email.
Would you like to read it?
Sure. I have an email from Fran Hudson regarding interfacility transfers. Interfacility transfers as presented by interim Chief Boldig is a great plan to implement on a trial basis. It could help hospitals which are already overcapacity and always in need to get patients out as soon as possible to make room for others. With the shortage of EMS services in our area and in general, it would be a great service to offer our local hospitals and people. Would also be a great way to possibly provide continuing care to our community members that may have been transported by ambulance to a local hospital and require a transfer to a higher level of care. I also wanted to clarify that the Chair Graffo was incorrect at the last meeting when he stated to Chief Boldig the idea of the ambulance service was presented as a moneymaker. Being on the committee for the ambulance service, I can tell you that it was never presented as a moneymaker. It was presented as a need to our community to help in a timely manner due to the shortage of all EMS and if it's offset the cost to run the service, then it would be, it would be a success. Again, at no time was it presented as a moneymaker. When I found it, then I found it very ironic that it was asked by interim Chief Boldig to present the committee with numbers and data when the same committee decided to implement a trial period on a new public safety department, which at no time presented any numbers or data or an explanation as to why they would implement this trial. I am in hopes that you would consider his request in this trial period as it would benefit so many and of course, as our, as with your safety department trial, can be stopped at any time if it's not meeting the expectations. Sincerely, Fran Hudson.
Any comment?
Can I comment on that?
Go ahead.
The part about the ambulance service not being presented as a moneymaker. I wasn't on the council back then and I wasn't on the committee, but I was paying attention to this stuff as it went on. And I'm going to refer whoever wants to know, people, to the April 9th, 2020 special council meeting in which the ambulance was discussed. At that time, the former fire chief presented to the council a breakdown of expenses and revenues, similar to what the fire department has been doing now. And he did discuss at that time that it was his opinion and the spreadsheets that he gave to the council back then, and it's available at that April 9th meeting, that this ambulance service was going to make money. And he presented it to the tune of somewhere in the neighborhood of $150,000 net income a year. So it was a consideration that the ambulance service was presented, not for the only reason, but for one reason was that it was a moneymaker.
If there is none, move on.
So we have no cable business. Old business, bended order number 4-2023, providing for authorization for the town manager to approve the installation of a street light to be placed at 715 Benton Avenue at an installation cost not to exceed $1,200 and a monthly fee to be determined at the cost of the town of Winslow.
Some of, second.
Discussion?
Did we get that determination yet?
The only thing I want to mention, and I, maybe, I thought I did, but maybe I didn't. The order that was prepared says that the street light will be installed at his property. It's not to be installed at his property, it's to be installed across the street from his entrance. Just to make that clear. I thought I had mentioned that last meeting, but maybe I didn't.
Further discussion? There being none, could we get a low call, please?
The motion? Oh, okay. Um.
I'll second that motion. Jeff did, okay.
Jeff, second.
Okay, sorry. So Dale, you did the motion and Jeff seconded. Thank you, sorry. Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Kurian?
No.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
No.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
No.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to three.
Chad? I'm sorry, but I'm getting notified that our audio is not, we can't, it can't be heard on Zoom, and if I turn my mic on, it beats back.
Do we have anyone zooming in?
Yes. She says she can hear it now, so I guess we're good.
It's a new business. Order number five dash 2023, providing for issuance of up to $6,800,000 of the town's general obligation bond to finance upgrades to Chaffee Brook Pump Station?
So move.
So move. Second.
Discussion? There being none, could we get a roll call, please?
Okay, Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Order number six dash 2023, providing for authorization for the Public Works Director to approve the attached amendment to the Sunset Heights Design Agreement, Sunset Design Agreement with right here, for the cost not to exceed $250,000.
So move. Second.
Discussion? There being none, could we get a roll call, please?
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Order number seven dash 2023, providing for authorization for the town manager to advertise for a public works foreman with a target start date of April 1st, 2023, and to appropriate $20,000 from unanticipated FY '23 revenue to fund the position.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Could you just explain the $20,000 for?
Sure. The $20,000 is both salary and benefits for April, May, and June of 2023. Our current foreman has indicated that he will be retiring in June. And we feel that the overlap would be good for training and continuity, and also since we're looking at pulling parks maintenance under Public Works, it really would be best to start with one foreman that's going to have the continuity of the season and not switch midstream. So that's the reason for the $20,000.
Oh, I know that.
Is the low end of, well, actually, it's the middle, middle end of, it's the median of the Public Works Foreman classification, times however many days that is left. Twenty, yeah, 25% of the year. And then adding on a benefit rate that includes one quarter of the year's worth of a family medical plan, understanding they may not take that, and employee-only dental, plus retirement at 9%, which they may or may not take.
Any further discussion? There being none, could we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Order number eight dash 2023, providing for authorization for the town manager to negotiate an extension of solid waste collection and disposal services for a period of not more than two years and not to exceed an increase of 6.5%, equivalent to the 2022 CBO.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Question, and I believe through our chair, on that question is, are we still going to truck this waste to Norwich Walk, or are we going to also use the facility transfer station in Waterville at the airport?
Go ahead.
Mickey Wayne from Casella is here, so he can answer more in depth, but we are not pursuing the extension with waste management, as they have indicated they wouldn't bid on anything we put out there right now. They can extend strictly the disposal portion of it, but it would be an increase, and I'm going to try working strictly with Casella. If you could address where exactly the landfill?
And the proposal we put together was for transportation.
Can you get up to the podium, the microphone, please? Thank you.
The proposal that we put together for Erica was to handle the pickup, the curbside pickup and the disposal. However, we wanted the flexibility to take the trash to either licensed facility, and there's some dynamics that, you know, play a role in that, fuel surcharges and transportation costs from our third-party haulers to haul out of the transfer station. So we wanted to keep you pretty much flat, as flat as we could, on price for the next two years until we have the option to go up to bid, and you, as the town, can find other competitors to bid against us and go to a new style pickup, which is what we call ASL, Automated Sideload. It takes drivers off the back of the truck and puts one driver and one truck en route, and we can shorten up the pickup days. So if, when Eric is ready to discuss the proposal, if you guys vote on it, then you'll see that we're pretty flat on the pricing going on. So we just wanted that flexibility. The truck's been depreciated, we've done the contract for five years, that's probably going to be able to reduce it and play a little bit of the tip fees. Any questions?
Any more questions for him, Gary?
I just got one, Peter. So I know that at some point in time, no one's going to be able to put people on the back of a rig, is that correct?
Until OSHA makes that, you know, decision, I guess, you know, it's always been talked about, it's our desire to take people off the back of the truck. That's where most of our injuries is drilled to company and the whole alignment footprint. Most of our injuries happen on the back of the trash truck, and Paul can attest, it's a dangerous spot for employees during, you know, weather events, and you never know if somebody's thrown away, we've had chemical issues, and all sorts of things like that. So it is our desire to go the other way, in the company's direction, to take guys off the back of the truck, period. And they've done it in most of our locations, and the ones that have it are heading that way. It's just this is a unique, small town, and, you know, we've done the contract for five years, we still have the equipment, we still have the guys, the town can't find another bidder to do, you know, in the direction of no employees on the back of the trucks.
Go ahead.
My understanding was insurance companies, rather than OSHA, are going to be driving that move away from?
Yes, that's correct. It's both. It's both.
If we can't, if you're insured, or if you can't get insured, you can't service us. So I, and I would imagine that a lot of, a lot of haulers will be facing the same situations.
Back through the chair. Question, my second question is, I have people ask me, especially on holidays, are they going to be picking up trash this holiday, we'll say, Martin Luther King's Day. I can't really tell them, it's hard.
Well, all the, all the holidays that we do not pick up, they're predetermined with us and Paul, it's been on the Facebook page, and as a schedule goes out. So we, we do post it, it is on the Facebook page, and Paul posted, it's been predetermined. So trust me, our phone rings off the hook, as a holiday, we are picking it up.
We've also been posting, before every holiday, when we announced that the town office will be closed, we've also been adding the information as to whether trash pickup will be delayed or not into those notices. So in addition to the information we have posted on the website that goes under the refuse hauling, we also put it out there. For instance, Mondays, Martin Luther King Day, town offices will be closed, there will be no delay in trash service. So we've been attempting to keep people updated further, a little bit better than they were in the past.
Is it possible we get cards? Business cards that gives us which days? Some of these are seniors.
Yep, well, Paul's got it at the town garage, he can run off copies for you if you have any copies.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, Mickey. There being none, could we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Order number nine, 2023, providing for adoption of the attached job description for the deputy fire chief position and for the newly created public safety department.
So move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Please.
Police. Adopting for the attached job description for the deputy police chief position for the newly created public safety department.
So move.
Second.
I was at Jeff and Lee.
Discussion? There being none, could we get a roll call?
Let me, let me tap just a second, Peter, I'm sorry about this one. The council will vote on this job description, as we're supposed to do. Appointment of the deputy chief is, of course, up with the town manager. And this has been going on for a few months now, and the only thing we can do is advise the town manager on an interim appointment of a deputy police chief pending the trial period. And I would like to suggest to the town manager that that interim appointment be made as soon as possible, so we can get this thing moving, and we're not dragging it on and dragging it on, and get this thing in place.
It's order number 11 on your agenda?
It is. Number 11?
11, 2023.
Keep going down.
Number eight.
So it's bullet point eight, but order number?
Yeah, that's the postum, Erica, within the police department. You can appoint an interim pending?
Yes, that's what this would, this would do. We have to seek candidates from within the department.
Yes, and until you go through that process, you can still appoint an interim pending that process.
We have to have someone who actually wants to do it, that's what we're, that's why we're asking to?
Yes, if you have, if you, if you have somebody.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Order number 10, 2023, providing for adoption of the attached amended job description for the deputy fire and EMS chief position to meet the needs of the newly created public safety department.
So move.
Second. Discussion? Should this read Erica Deputy Fire and Deputy EMS Chief?
No, because he's the fire and EMS deputy. The departments.
Okay.
It's fire and EMS.
Okay.
We're not having three deputies.
No, no, I just, yeah. Discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make the same, same statement I just made on the deputy police chief, and this may come up down on number 11 too, but, but I think if the council approves this, Erica has the authority to appoint an interim deputy fire and EMS chief pending the hiring process. And that can be done immediately. And I'm just going to put that recommendation out there.
I agree. Anyone else? No further discussion, could we get a roll call, please?
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Order number 11, 2023, providing for authorization for the interim public safety director to post an interim deputy police chief position within the Fire Department.
Please.
Police Department.
So move.
Second.
I'll get there, I promise.
So am I, I'm missing all that stuff. Discussion on this order, please. There being none, roll call.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Quarian?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Order number 12 dash 2023, providing for adoption of the attached job description for the public safety director position for the newly created public safety department.
So move.
Second. Discussion?
If I may through the chair, you know, reading the job descriptions are all pretty basic, and I understand fully when I read them what the responsibilities are. I just question, because Scott, Mr. Baldig is pretty new, Paramedic Baldig is new, Chief McDade is pretty new to the positions in the Fire Department, it would be a stretch, I think, to prepare a budget, given, you know, the responsibility of preparing a budget. And do you feel that you guys can prepare a budget adequately in the time you have, working together, so that when it comes to us, everybody's on the same page and supporting that budget?
Fire Department's finished their budget and has been forwarded to the director, and we, I don't want to speak for the director, but I believe that we have a meeting coming up to present or to work on a public safety department budget. So I don't see why we can't do that.
Yep, that's fine, that was just my concern when I was reading it. Is there enough time to do that?
You agree?
Yes, we're actually meeting, we're going to try to meet on Thursday.
Okay, great.
It's going to be crazy this week, but we're going to try to meet on Thursday, and I've already talked to Sherry.
talked to Sherry. And we're trying to, the town manager wants us to put together some bullet points or like a PowerPoint, and we're going to try to get that done, and then we're going to look at combining them together to have one public safety department, if that's the way you guys decide, because we'll have police, fire, and together.
Okay, great, that's all, that was all my concern, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Brien?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Order number 13-2023, providing for authorization for the town manager to appropriate $80,000 to the elementary school property, 1500502-55404, for the purposes of purchasing a budding property in the front of the school identified as Winslow Map Lot Number 19-27 from KRDPLC as follows: $41,200 from the sale of town property, account number 110004-41419, and $38,800 from property tax commitment, 110004-41417.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Please, if I may, is this our, is this our second reading or first?
It's the first reading, you all voted to allow me to purchase it.
Okay.
But now we need to actually appropriate the monies, because we didn't appropriate, this is part of our budget, so we need to actually put the money into accounts to be able to purchase it.
Is this a time-sensitive thing that we waived the second reading?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion to waive the second reading?
We got a vote on this one.
We got a vote on the first one first.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Brien?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Seven to zero, passes.
Okay, I make a motion to waive the second reading?
Second.
Roll call.
Is there any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Brien?
No.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Before you go on, Erica, on these other orders for the job descriptions, should we waive second reading on those in order to implement this now?
Well, I, technically, we aren't going to fill the permanent positions until the trial is over. So, to me, I would say, no, you don't really need to. The only one you might want to consider waiving the second reading would be the, under bullet point eight, order 11-2023, so that we can move forward with posting an interim position in-house at this time.
Okay, can somebody make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I second it.
I get to get it more specific, Peter, if you mind?
No, go ahead.
I make a motion that we waive the second reading on order number 11-2023.
Second.
I'm sorry, order number 11?
11?
Yes, that is, it's under your bullet point eight, Audra.
Dale made the motion, she had a second.
Okay, roll call, Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Brien?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't catch that earlier. So, you don't need to wait the second to, 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 to?
Resolution number three-2023, providing for authorization for the town manager to consent with CRC Communications of Maine, doing business as GoNetSpeed, formerly Otelco, for 92 pole attachments, CMP application number 063520230029.
So moved. Second. If there being none, could I get a roll call, please?
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
And Jerry Brien?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Upstream.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Passes six, two, zero, one, done. Resolution number 2004-2023, providing for authorization for the town manager to apply 200,000, 200,000, two, wait, I don't have that right.
200, 200.
And USDA Rural Business Development Grant Fund on behalf of Maine Crisp.
So moved. Second. Discussion?
I do have both Elaine Theriot and Louis Goldstein here from Maine Crisp. Elaine is with, is joining us via Zoom because she unfortunately has been struck down by the COVID bug. So, Elaine, are you there, can you hear us? I don't know if she can.
I'm going to text her.
Are you, are you there, Elaine? I heard you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
You can?
Yep.
Yes.
Everyone can hear me?
Yes.
Great.
So, I was going to just introduce ourselves, and then Elaine can follow up with the details. So, I'm Louis Goldstein, I'm the chief executive officer of Maine Crisp, and Karen Getz, the founder, chief product officer. And wanted to thank the chairman, the town council, the town manager for the support they've given to Maine Crisp over the past year as we've expanded, opened the facility, and we're very excited about expanding our product line beyond crisps to crackers, like flat crackers and cookies. And so, crisp is sort of something used for charcuterie, and the market is this big, crackers is this big, and cookies is this big. And so, we're here tonight to ask for the support for USDA rural grant that the town would need to apply for, for Maine Crisp in order for us to install a production line in order to be able to produce the cookies and the crackers. And then, Maine Crisp on our own will raise funds through a fundraise to put in some packaging and stuff. But this request is for the USDA rural grant for businesses under a million dollars, and Elaine can explain the details of how the grant works. Elaine?
Elaine, are you able to hear us?
Yes, I can tell, I can ask any, give any questions that the council would have.
Well, do you want to?
So, Elaine, if you could just spell out briefly how this works as far as the USDA rural development funds cannot go to Maine Crisp as a pass-through. So, in other words, we can't just apply for the money and then pass it to Maine Crisp as the recipient. So, we're talking about having a, the town would actually purchase the equipment, which we would get the, the grant monies for, and we would lease it to Maine Crisp. Can you explain how that would work?
Yes, exactly. So, because it is a federal funding opportunity flowing through USDA, the funding would go from USDA to the town of Winslow, and it would stay with the town of Winslow. The town of Winslow would then use that money, or the money would then come out to purchase equipment that Maine Crisp has identified with the help of Bill Woodyer from the Maine Manufacturing Extension Partnership as part of the budget. And then, because this whole grant is, the whole purpose is for rural economic development, so the USDA wants to give towns an opportunity to help the businesses that are in town. But obviously, with the federal funding, it has some limitations, so it can't just give money to businesses in order to grow and hire more staff members, it has to stay with the town. So, what we would do is the Maine Crisp and the town of Winslow would draft and eventually finalize, you don't have to finalize it by the grant due date, but you have to draft a contract that would allow Maine Crisp to lease the equipment from the town of Winslow. So, the USDA likes this arrangement because they like, you know, ultimate ownership to kind of live with their town of Winslow. So, technically, you know, you purchase the equipment, lease it to Maine Crisp, it is at the Maine Crisp facility, and then Maine Crisp, depending on the terms of the lease, would pay you back. USDA recommends or says that it's fine to, you know, face that contract off of straight-line depreciation, so, you know, there's a, let's say, a $200,000 ask for equipment that has a 10-year lifespan, that would be, Maine Crisp would pay the town of Winslow, you know, $20,000 for 10 years in order to lease that equipment for, you know, the duration of its, of its life.
But, but just, USDA will reimburse the town of Winslow within 30 days the full amount of the grant that you give us. So, the money will be paid back by the USDA, and then we will pay you for that equipment. So, the town of Winslow is positive on, you know, actually gaining money, because all of the money we're giving you is on top of you, you received the money back from the USDA for any, for the outlay you made, if that makes sense.
So, the town of Winslow make the money on this lease?
Yes.
To the tune of $200,000, the way I read it. We, we buy $200,000 worth of equipment, USDA reimburses us for that equipment or pre-pays for it, however, would that, that?
Within 30 days, you'll get the money back.
And then, we charge your company lease on this equipment to the tune of 200,000 on a 10-year, 10-year note.
Yeah, we have to, we have to decide that 10 or 15 years, I need to get advice from Bill on like what the normal depreciation is of the equipment.
Okay. So, basically, regardless, the town really has no liability here.
You have 30 days. 30 days, you have to plug the money for 30 days.
30 days.
Okay.
Plus, over 10 years, we might get $20,000 a year from you.
Yeah.
Sure you'd want more equipment. I do want more equipment, but Elaine is recommending that we, we don't ask for too much.
Come back next year.
That facility, that facility is, you have enough room to?
Yeah, that facility, we have enough room for this, and is also, the plan is that with this equipment, we'll be adding at least 15 jobs, and we haven't figured out whether we'll go to seven-day production, double-shift production in a day, so there'll be increased production and at least 15 jobs, you know, from, you know, from the time we get the equipment for the next couple of years.
You are aware that the Maine Crisp is liable for personal property tax on equipment you lease?
Mm-hmm. We were in Waterville, too.
I just?
Yeah, I have to let Waterville know we moved.
Everything in front of you, okay.
Did you folks have plans for a retail shop down there?
Yes, yes.
Is that?
I had, well, I still want to. It's, if we do, it'll most likely be the summer. I had big plans for like holidays, I'll have it ready to go, but it's been too busy.
Yeah, we've been, we've had our best month ever.
But it's not on the back burner for a retail shop down there?
Well, it is on the back burner, but, but, yeah.
We're trying to prioritize building the distribution, getting the, the manufacturing, growing the manufacturing, and building the business as quickly as we can. And sort of the retail shop, we have to figure out when that fits in.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of the council? All set, all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could we get a roll call, please?
Dale Macklin?
Yes.
Jerry Brien?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Joseph Gravel?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Lee Tryhan?
Yes.
And Peter Drappel?
Yes.
Passes seven to zero.
So, this is a resolution, so only one reading?
Right. The mechanism is that we, we will have to draft what a contract would look like, but we are applying for the monies. When it comes to actually accepting the monies, council would have to have it back again as a vote, as an order at that time. But right now, it's a resolution because we are applying for them.
Onto discussion items, public safety department, oh, I'm sorry, I think we took that discussion off.
We did.
Sorry. The fire department, tanker?
Yeah, at least three minutes, five minutes, please, whatever you want. Okay.
Evening, again, town council members, Chair Drappel, Town Manager La Croix, thank you for letting me talk about a potential tanker replacement.
Can you speak up a little, Scott, please?
Currently, the fire department T5 or slash seven now is a 1995 International Commercial Maintenance costs, just recently, were about 10, so just over $10,000 for wiring, stator, and ECM computer due to catching fire in the station. Dash, the dash does not work, no speedometer or hour meter, it goes into limp mode frequently and requires new pedal assembly, usually with more than, with more staffing, only two can respond in the vehicle. We have to send another vehicle with the tanker from mutual aids. Talk about pump issues, the transfer valve for RPMs is stuck in volume, cannot pass a pump test. Company that manufactured the pump that, that's in the truck has gone out of business, so we can't get parts. Water level gauge does not work, which is important for the operator to know how much water is in there, so we don't fry the pump. And also, the last thing is the pump throttle cable is failing. So, this was a state-of-the-art truck back in the early 90s, but it's, and it's served its purpose for the town of Winslow. A new replacement, we had a meeting with our Pierce manufact, or rep, and we were talking about a custom cab, like similar to the engine and the ladder, due to more staffing per shift. This truck would be seating for four in a cab, air packs would be six in a cab, galvanized frame rail, and various other undercarriage parts. 17-inch brakes, airbags for accident protection, more storage for gear and, more storage for gear and hose and et cetera. It's a tack force. It's a tack force suspension, so we wouldn't have to use the area of a football field to turn the tanker now. The old tanker, it takes a while to get, get around corners, I'm sure you know that. So, this is a state-of-the-art suspension. Better turning radius, better handling, pump and roll cap capacities, so if we're at a wild wildfire, we can actually extinguish the fire while the pump is rolling, so somebody's in the driver's seat. It's a little bit more versatile. It's called a puck, puck pump, like the other apparatuses, it'll have a generator, multi-use, it will be a multi-use apparatus. If one of our, if Engine 7 goes out of service for, you know, warranty work, service work, that truck can take the place of the engine. Currently, after meeting with our representative Pierce, it's been having a 15% to 20% increase every year since we bought our last engine and ladder. Good news is if we lock this down and come to an agreement with Pierce now, we would lock into the current price and not have to endure the cost of increase while the truck is being built. We could do the lease-to-own option like we did with the ladder and the engine. If we purchased the new tanker through Pierce, we will be able to have all of the warranty and service work done at Allegiance in Auburn. All of our current trucks have warranty and maintenance work done in Auburn. If anybody has any questions, I'll try to answer your questions.
Is it still going to be 3,000?
It's going to be a 28,000, 2800, excuse me, 2800-gallon tank.
I'll give you the 200 gallons.
Hmm?
I'll give you the 200 gallons.
Well, I can put you containers in the backseat if you want to.
What's the cost of that?
Unfortunately, I was hoping to have a price tag for you, but our representative has not forwarded that yet. I did have a conversation with him, or Wayland had a conversation with him. We anticipated 1.3, but I think it's just, I think it's going to be down to 1 million. But don't, I mean, I'm still waiting for the numbers from our, our Pierce rep.
Scott, is the tanker something that's ever sent by itself to, to combat a fire?
Yes, we, we use a tanker for mutual aid. If outlying communities that we have mutual, mutual aid agreements with, they will request the tanker and accrue.
Okay. What do you consider accrue? I mean, do we need a four-man cab?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yes.
Well, I would suggest a smaller cab and a standard chassis, something that can be serviced within 10 miles of here and not at the, at the mercy of a specialty house that is just going to charge all outdoors. For a tanker truck, for Winslow's use, I would assume that goes with another truck.
No, no, it does not.
No?
No. So...
He's the chairman of our truck committee. He may be able to soak in a little bit more information. So, I met with Pierce, they can come up, you're talking commercial chassis, so it'll be a freightliner chassis. It's still like 48 months out, but when the freightliner chassis leaves the plant, it doesn't know what it's going to be. They only put a 3,000-gallon tank on the back. So, the cab's not supported like with the custom cab with the engine that we have now, and there's still $700,000, $800,000. They come with different frame rails, smaller brakes, it's a safety issue.
They're not safe, they're not meant to be rolled over. Pierce is designed to be crashed and survived.
That's, 3,000 gallons of water is 24,000 pounds.
Correct.
That can go on a standard single-rare axle truck with a, with a, with a off-the-shelf frame.
It, it won't last in a main winter.
It won't.
No, they put, you put on these trucks, it won't last.
So, guys, let's talk about this at a different time so we don't take, you know, take up a lot of time, but you'll never sell me on the fact that we need a custom chassis or a tanker truck. 24,000 pounds is nothing for a commercial chassis. Paul, chime in.
My truck's running 80,000 pounds on the road, probably, I don't know. Commercial chassis will give you 6,000 pounds standard?
A standard Volvo frame like I run will handle 110,000 pounds, total G W, so, we run, you know, we run seven months out of the year, 24/7, at 80,000 pounds. I'm just saying that, you know, if we can save 20 or 30,000 dollars and not have a custom, a custom cab and a custom chassis, and Wayland, you know, I mean, they've done this over when it comes time to show.
We looked, we looked at Brimley Mountain where we bought our used rescue, and the cheapest tanker I can find there is 984,000, and that's a used tanker.
Commercial chassis?
Commercial chassis.
900,000?
900,000.
And a brand-new custom 4-man chassis is a million dollars.
Since we bought our trucks, like the ladder, I think we paid 1.2 million dollars for, Ray says now we're $2 million for the ladder truck. Our engine is like 1.4 now. They've had a 20% increase every year since we purchased our last truck.
We all know on the council that we need, we need a tanker truck. There's, there's no question, that's, that's not going to be deprived of you, but I think we need to talk about this a little further before we pull the trigger on a, on order of a truck. Go ahead, Rocky.
Through the chair, just a quick thing, the oil changes and that type of service, correct me if I'm wrong, can be done in town. It's the pump, any specialty part of the truck that would have to go down to Auburn.
Right, correct.
Or warranty work. But as far as the regular service, that could be done in town.
I think we're actually...
And just the water, that's not the only way you get on the, you got the generator, you got all the equipment that's going to be put on after the truck is built, so that all adds up to it.
All I'm saying is I want to get together as a whole with you included, Rocky, and talk about this around the table, and let's just put our heads together before we say yes and pull the trigger on something custom. That's all, I'm just, I want to have the discussion going.
Point of order.
Yep.
This is where we're supposed to have this discussion, again, this is the public forum. That's why we put this on here for discussion, is to try and get these out there. So, potentially, we come back with more information, and we have another discussion item next month. This is the forum where we have to have that discussion.
Okay.
We should be able to have the information back here by next month.
Okay, and let's get together and we'll just share some information, okay?
If I, if I go through the chair, could we get an estimate on both the classic chassis and then the custom chassis, just so we can see the differences and you can make your case? But we'll have both figures for us, and we can make that decision at that point.
We can get that, they have what they call basically a cookie cutter, which is just how Pierce splits it out. This is what you get. So, if we go with ladders on the truck, in order to be classified as a pumper tanker, it has to carry ladders, we put ladders on the truck, we don't get no sides, so we can't put air packs in it, we can't put the other equipment that we need in it, but I can get you that information.
Yeah, let's get, list them both, at least we'll have the information, and we can make that decision in the future.
What I, what I would suggest, Wayland and Shef Bolik, is just put together your two products and a list of pros and cons with each. That way, everyone can weigh, everyone at this table can weigh, you know, yes, we may be giving up some functionality if we go with the lesser option, or geez, these things that come with the more expensive option, the custom option, we really don't want to do without. So, just to make it real easy to follow.
I got them done.
One more thing, also, we want to make sure it doesn't affect our ISO rating, correct? So, we want to make sure that this has all the capabilities to get, keep our rating.
Thank you, Wayland.
Those stupid people, what is that?
You want to explain that to them, the ISO rating?
I don't really know the correct definition of it. It has to finish that.
Yeah, so, the town is always, is rated by the insurance, ISO, and, our ISO, I don't, I went looking for our ISO rating that we have currently. A lot of it has to do with staffing and the equipment that we have, but it's with, if you have a very low ISO rating, that goes back to the taxpayers as an increase in their property insurance, I believe. The higher you get, the less insurance goes back to your, your taxpayers. So, I, I looked for it before the meeting a couple of times, I haven't been able to find out what Winslow's ISO rating is currently, but I'll keep looking.
I think it was a B4.
It was a B4.
I believe.
Yeah, I think, I think when they talked about the ambulance and the staffing back in 2019, I think Winslow had the lowest rating. I don't know what a B4 is, but it has, it has everything to do with property insurance. I imagine it went up when we went from two on staff to four on staff.
There's a lot involved in it, and has to do with the distance from the fire station that the property's located at, if there's a hydrant, if it's in the hydrant district or not, the staffing level and the equipment level.
Yes.
And it affects more so the commercial properties on their fire insurance. It does affect the residential, but more so the commercial stuff, but it, it does have an effect on the rates in our town.
So, the I stands for insurance?
Insurance.
Insurance, yeah, I'm not sure what the I is.
I have it right here. ISO stands for insurance service, services offices, the score that reflects how prepared a community and area is for fires, while mainly focuses on the local fire departments and water supplier, the factors that contribute to the area's score.
Okay. I want to check it on that. And I, I will try to find the current ISO rating for Winslow.
Dates for fiscal year 2024 budget workshops.
I guess that would be me. So, we have, the date for me to turn the budget into council is March 1st this year. We have scheduled our first reading of the budget for April 24th, I believe, I did send it out to you all, and our second reading at the regular May council meeting. So, in between there, we need to schedule our dates to have our workshops. Last year, I thought it worked out pretty well for us to have the daytime meetings and get, you know, set aside a couple of full days where we brought in lunch and we had our entire discussion about, you know, we split it into basically two halves, except for schools, they still need to go at night. That worked out pretty well and took a lot less time than meeting multiple nights throughout the month-long period, and I think it was a little bit more productive as well, meant we had our department heads right there, and we had Tanya with us at all times to help with any background data, so we'd be looking to see what dates we could look at to make that happen again this year, unless the council's pleasure is to go back to nighttime meetings.
I would suggest that we leave it the same, three days of whatever it was last year?
I agree. Somebody else had a problem.
Whatever the time, whatever the start and time, start and finish time, it may be...
So, how long does the council want between when I deliver the budget on March 1st and when we have our first, do you want a week to digest the budget or two weeks?
I think a week is more than enough.
So, we would probably then look at starting to schedule the week of March 13th, which is a council week, and the reason I say that is March 1st is a Wednesday, so you could start the week of the 6th, but that would only give you all about four days to look it all over before we started having meetings, or if you go into the week of the 13th, we just need to be aware that that's a council week.
And Patrick's day week, too.
What's that got to do with? I didn't realize we were having green beer, but somebody's going to be assigned that task.
So, why don't we, why don't we try the week of the council, the week of the 13th? If you want to go like a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, is that what we're looking at, three days in a row? Is that what the council, that we did last year?
I believe last year we did two days in a row, and then we had a nighttime for schools, but we went back and digested everything from the first two meetings, made all the edits, and then brought it back to you all for a final workshop, another week or two after that.
We only had one night.
We had one night with the schools.
We probably had one night with the, no, we did do the civic organization.
Civic, they were doing them all day. I can't do the 15th.
I don't know yet, I don't know yet.
There should be a day between the first two.
So, if we did the 14th and the 15th, and then we came back the week of the 20th and did the 21st, would that 1, 2, 3, or the 23rd?
I, I think you need to look at the 14th and the 16th because Chairman Grappo just said he can't do the 15th. But you could do the 14th and the 16th.
14th and the 16th, and then come back the following week on the 23rd for a review of the first two days?
Those dates are all open for me.
Fine with me.
And then what, what day of the third one will be?
Was it 8 o'clock, right?
23rd. The 23rd, yeah. So, the 14th, 16th, and 23rd. Yeah.
And that was 8 o'clock, did we start last time?
Lee has, can't get here at 8 o'clock.
They can't get here before, before 10:30.
Well, that's probably too late. However, it's a transportation issue, correct?
Yeah.
So...
I might, I mean, with this much notice, I might be able to arrange it, hit at least one of them.
Well, and with, with it being a transportation issue, that does fall under the guidelines for being able to participate remotely.
Okay.
So, we could probably work around it. I would propose we start at 8:30, not 8:00. I usually need a few minutes just to check over emails and stuff when I walk into the office in the morning and...
8:30 is fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Till 1:00, 3:00?
8:30 till 3:00?
Yep. 8:30 to 3:00, 14th, 16th, and then the 23rd.
14th, 16th, 23, yeah.
And then we'll just need to come up with a night where we can do schools, and I should get back with you all on that one because, Peter, I need to make sure that it's a date that works for them, so, and I have no idea right now where schools budgets are at.
And then you've got to give the school time to get the election thing ready.
Yes, but we, we vote on our budget before that actually goes to referendum, so backing into these dates, if we have our final vote on the town's budget at the meeting in May, the regular council meeting, we will hit the deadlines to make sure we have the due referendum.
You're still allowing to be around that?
Yeah.
Do you remember what date the school was last year? I don't remember.
I can find out. Sure, but I can figure it out. So, March of 22. I want to say it was close to the end of March, I'm still looking here. Can I, can I email that one out?
Yeah, I do. I just got some issues.
I don't want to waste everybody's time.
Yeah, I just have some issues the beginning of April, that's all, that's why, I just want to make sure that I can attend.
You're going to go to Atlanta again?
I'm going this year, right? Oh, okay.
Okay, and kind of that rail trail?
I'd like to take that off, that was my discussion item, it was going to resolve itself, so I'd like to take that off for a future date sometime.
I talked to him today, he's willing to do the rest of the year, no problem.
Good, good, and then that resolves. And then that resolves itself next year.
Kennebent County Emergency Management?
I put that on there, but I was hoping that, so Kennebent County Emergency Management Association has been doing community meetings. They just started doing them last month, and what they're trying to do is get feedback from all the communities that they serve and also find things that we can all collaborate on. So I was supposed to attend and I was unable to, but Chief McDade attended in my place and Councillor Karen also attended, so I was hoping maybe you guys could just give us a little synopsis of the types of things that were discussed at that meeting, just to kind of point out what types of things we're looking at. And they're having more coming up in April as well.
Biggest thing I, biggest thing I saw was they're talking about, like we talked about today, some kind of dispatch, countywide dispatch, everybody's having a hot time with police, fire, and ambulance, and we're also having a hot time keeping dispatches, so we have a crisis situation here where come July, we're not going to have anybody pick up the 911 phone calls, which we're trying to resolve now because the FCC and Stowee has informed us that as of July, they've lost half their dispatches, they can't handle the call. So if we can do a countywide one, that'd be one of the things we've been looking at. They also talked quite a bit about the ambulance service and how they have a part of the response times, and they had some ideas, they were trying to work out on that. Those are the two biggest things, unless you have something else?
Yeah, I came away with, I have a hard time remembering what happened yesterday, much less three weeks ago, but one of the things I did get out of the meeting was that if you, if EMS, if you take a course, that the Kennebent County, they will reimburse you for that course, not the town, so it's, it saves the town some money for that, so any, as long as you take the course, whatever level it is, just put it through there for billing and they'll, they'll take care of the course through the, through the school.
I have two members going through EMT class.
Okay, okay, good.
What levels are those at, Scott?
Basic emergency medicine, they do all the levels, so basic EMT.
No, but the two that you have going now?
Basic EMT.
They're going for their basic EMT?
Yes.
And that's the, the first level?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty much all I remember of the meeting, and there
were some other things there, but...
I went to, I went to a meeting in, in, at the Waterville Police Department for all fire chiefs in regards to Somerset County dispatch, giving us a five-month notice that they will no longer be providing dispatch information. So similar to what Director McDade and Councillor Karen went to, but it was more driven to the fire chiefs. There was talk, that's where the, the talk about the countywide dispatch came in, and also Waterville, Waterville PD used to be a PSAP. We certainly have the numbers for them, call volume for them to, to start being a PSAP, but I'm not sure how that would go with Waterville and the taxpayers, but the, a countywide system probably would be more sufficient. I know that Augusta Fire is using a PSAP in Holton, so that, there's a big delay in their responses. The further south in the state of Maine, the more PSAPs, the further north you go, there's less PSAPs. And that was part of one of our governors.
Also, there was, yeah, there was a program, Paul, that they hold through the emergency system there, they, they hold two CMP trucks specifically for Kennebent County, so you can call them directly if you have a tree or something during an emergency, and they'll send those CMP trucks for Kennebent County. That's held for Kennebent County.
But good note, that was supposed to be in place in 2017, I think we had the last big windstorm, but if you can really follow it up beyond that, they tell us if that's still active or who should be reaching out there, might be trying to go through the fire. I mean, there should be one point of contact with town, but...
There's an app now too, that you can go on and you can say your emergency. I can't remember how to get to the app, but there is an app now through that emergency system that anybody can go on, even a citizen can go on and report an emergency. There was also a CPR training course, instructors course?
I have, I have a member that's going to be taking that. I also have a member that's going to be taking a class for becoming an EMS teacher, so you can teach, you can teach EMT schools, classes, you can teach events classes and potentially paramedics classes. They're having a hard time getting instructors. They're looking at people coming up from Florida, so they're just not available.
In addition, Gray, I have the email that you sent out when, after attending, and it's actually pretty lengthy, so in addition to the EMS CPR, there's a program, MD3 program called Physician, Physician to Street, mainly along the I-95 corridor, not a 24-hour program, but doctors would work with lower, local fire departments modeled after the Lifeline program, looking for a place to house apparatus at one of the fire stations within the county that has room. There's an online calendar put out by the Emergency Management Association. If a town is having a special event, they can help promote the event. Kennebent Connect was the app we were talking about. Make Safe, a program where EMA has a special deal with CMP, you've discussed that. Forum Training, GIS information that towns can send in their information and have it mapped on their GIS, and other ideas from past sessions, providing backup code enforcement officers if town loses an officer, town clerk backup, EMS pool of EMTs and paramedics, grant writing, cloud drivers, Class B, county-level dispatching, and job fierce for EMS. So lots of...
Scott, you have an acronym. PFAS. What is PFAS?
Town clerk backup, EMS pool of EMTs and paramedics, grant writing, cloud drivers, Class B, county-level dispatching and job...
I got it, it was interesting. Oh, exactly. Oh, it's, it's, it's probably safety, couple safety. Yeah, and, yeah, so other municipalities will, will filter through this larger dispatch and, and route the calls to the appropriate facilities. So Penobscot County is a PSAP, so Penobscot County will pick up the 911, it's a call, it's an emergency call in Bangor, so they'll ring it down to Bangor's dispatch, and Bangor's dispatch will send the appropriate units. So it's kind of like a hub, a bigger hub than a smaller dispatch center like Waterville. So that's what it is.
And we're required to participate with one, correct? We're required to participate with one.
Yeah, and it surprises me that, that the Regent is, is doing what they're doing, but I mean, even when you shut down a PSAP, all the equipment in that PSAP has to be maintained and kept up to date, because if there's a major, major incident in the state of Maine, those PSAPs are able to turn back on and operate it, so...
So the executive session, motion to enter into an executive session pursuant to 1 MRSA subsection 4056A, a personal matter.
So moved.
Second. Anybody need a quick back?